Planning. The first item of business is public comments. We have anybody? Rita, who wants to share any comments with us?
Yes, I see one hand raised so far. Let's see, once I unmute your mic, you will have three minutes to do your public comment. And give me one second as I.
Rita, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear you.
Oh, can anybody else hear me? Okay, so. Still no sound. One second. Suzanne, do you mind doing another sign for him?
Okay, now I can, now I can hear you, Rita.
Oh, awesome. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what happened there, but here we go.
What happens in this era of Zoom meetings? So.
It's been a day of that. So it looks like Finley is the first hand I saw raised and I will.
Thank you.
Finley, go ahead whenever you're ready. Your three minutes will start when you begin to speak.
Hey, I'm Phyllis Finley. I live in Kenmore. I'm affirming the conclusion that some of you have already come to regarding the feasibility and practicality of allowing commercial businesses in residential zoning, euphemistically referred to as corner stores. But what it is, allowing commercial businesses in residential zoning. A large, like, corner store where you buy popsicles and penny candy and emergency courts of milk is Fantasyland. For me, it's an image that's truly nostalgic, having grown up in Seattle with just such a place two blocks away in the living room of the neighbor's Craftsman bungalow. But this isn't then, and this isn't Seattle. I have four questions, observations, and concerns. Number one, has a feasibility study been done to determine if this is financially viable? Some of you might remember the corner of One Eden Drive and 153rd, when the vacant building was a blight in the neighborhood before it was finally transformed into the guest house. The corner store didn't last long. As much as we want to patronize them, it was hard to buy bananas for $1.29 a pound when I could go a half a mile away to QFC and get them for 69 cents. And what happens to the feel of the neighborhood when the corner store folds for good? Well, we saw what happened to that corner. Number two, one benefit that's been purported for the corner store is that would be closer for neighbors to carry home their groceries. Seriously, groceries, plural? Who does their quote grocery shopping unquote at the corner store? There are no food deserts in Kenmore. I challenge you to take your weekly grocery list to Rudy's Corner and find the selection you need at the price you want. Three, if you build it, they will come. Have you noticed when there's an escalator and a stairway side by side, which one is empty? It may be a fantasy to assume that neighbors want to walk even to the corner store. Well, let's also factor in the time. If I walked to a corner store, I'll be back home in 45 minutes with a fraction of the items on my list and more money spent than I intended. But just a little further to QFC, I'm still home in 45 minutes, but I had everything that was on my list, made a quick stop at Bartel, and picked up a Subway sandwich. Finally, we don't want more traffic in the neighborhoods. We want the business to thrive. So realistically, how is that going to work? Neighbors within a four-block radius going to promise not to go anywhere else ever to get their haircut except to the corner salon? I hope you enjoy pondering the fun and fantasy of the corner store concept in Kenmore, but seriously, just please keep commercial businesses out of residential zoning. Thank you.
Next, we have Elizabeth Mooney.
Can you see me or hear me?
We can hear you. Your three minutes starts now.
Okay, thank you. My name is Elizabeth Mooney. I live in Kenmore for the last 26 years. I'm president of PERC. I know some of you on the Planning Commission. PERC stands for, it's a nonprofit, a 501(c)(3). It stands for People for Environmentally Responsible Kenmore. It's not against development. So the most important thing is that I think the Planning Commission needs to have a comprehensive understanding of the toxins that are in our environment. And I really appreciate what Dwight Thompson asked Debbie Bent and Lori Anderson two weeks ago. I was disappointed that Debbie and Lori seemed to shut down his inquiries. Forest Park and Kenmore should all have a better canopy, more preservation of wetlands. And, and our policy, I think, at the Lake Point property should have to do with finding out what toxins are there to protect our health, of our environment, and our people. That is a toxic control act site. And we, as citizens, have been in contact with the Department of Ecology. They've been muzzled by our, our city attorney now to even talk to us about it, which I find. But what you need to know is that the Department of Ecology, who should be watching over our health and telling the city whether or not there are toxins out there, has got not a chance to even come out to figure out because they have had a hiring freeze. The merger is not working on it. The 2019 view has not happened. And basically, the Department of Ecology is not watching over what's happening there. Yet, you've got a purchase and sale agreement on there, which is muzzling our council when our citizens should be made aware about how our policies should have to do with health, not commerce first. You guys are the only ones right now that we could even talk to. And I really would appreciate if you could learn about how to do the comprehensive testing. Use the other citizens that are in our community. Dr. Richard Honor is one of them, who came to one of our PERC talks and talked about toxins. Not, not here in Kenmore, but let's not turn ourselves into a place where we just turn the other face and don't watch over what our Planning Commission and our council and our citizens need to know. If there are toxins that are leaching out of that unlined site, we need to know what's going into our river before we authorize and get rid of P suffixes that are meant there to protect the wetlands. It used to be green. And last week, they were digging on that site. We called Ecology, but Ecology doesn't even have anybody to go out there and check whether or not those are the contaminants that came from the, the reasons that it is a model toxic site. They're being pulled out by bulldozers and.
Ms. Mooney, thank you for your comments. That's your.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
I see one more hand, Stacy V. Give me one second. Stacy V, once you start talking, I will start your three-minute timer.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Thank you. Stacy Valenzuela, Kenmore residents. I'm sure several of the residents appreciate the Planning Commission's sensitivity and support environmentally on a lot of these issues. However, we have seen and several residents have stated they do not want the corner stores. We have several corner stores, and I think there might be one or two areas where there might be a fit in for a little coffee shop or a corner store. But the gas stations, I don't think, were counted in on the little markets that are available for convenience. We also have several open businesses that seem to be empty for months on end, sometimes years. And if we can't fill those, we should not be bringing in other competitors for our small local businesses that are trying to survive, especially now. The other thing I wanted to talk about is the confusion concerning the Kenmore industrial Lake Point land and contamination and reviewing a permit. The city should be requesting as a priority, testing by an independent company and report on what requirements are needed for reading, now I can't say it, remediation of contamination at the site specifically if deemed by the Department of Energy as part of the consent decree before soil is allowed to be disturbed. Is there years that we have to wait after capping those sites before it's safe? We need the enforcement by the City of Kenmore, our county and state, as well as Department of Ecology for them, and they don't have the manpower to properly test and protect our residents. Residents have seen no active cleanup by the property owner since the decree in 2001, only continued dumping of more contamination. Kenmore continues year after year to pay for consultants, hundreds of thousands of city dollars for contaminated industrial site that the property owner continues to add the contamination. Is this site likely leaking dioxins and petroleum oil into our Lake Washington waters? There has been testing on that. That has showed some dioxins and petroleum. I think this large of a site, if deemed safe for human activity, also needs the park or community center as part of the agreement. And I know you guys are working on the agreement to change that if this permit and sales falls through. And that would be something that would be great, that the, to have stipulated that the site has to be tested, it has to be cleaned up, and then tested again before anybody can be on the site. And this was basically what Department of Energy had informed us, that because it's an industrial site with all that contamination, that it's not safe for anybody to be on it when we inquired about it.
That's your three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy, for your comments. So is Rita, anybody else on, on hand virtually to share any thoughts with us?
One moment. I see no more hands raised.
Okay. Well, that fulfills that element of the agenda. Looks like the minutes approval is being deferred for the next meeting, so we'll move on from that. And that brings us to the agenda items, preliminary results from the community survey and comprehensive plan vision statement. So welcome Debbie and Lori to join us and take her away.
Okay. Very much. So, good evening, Chair Orange Shala, members of the Planning Commission. We have two business items on the, for the meeting tonight. The first is the, as Chair Orange Shala mentioned, the preliminary results of the community survey. And then the second item on the agenda is the comprehensive plan vision statement. So I'll start with the community survey. As you know, the survey has closed, and there were more than 1,100 responses, which is a very good response rate. In my memo, I noted that the full analysis and reporting from the consultant, PRR Inc., would happen on the 18th. That's not right. It's the 17th, your regular meeting, so I apologize for that in the memo. But I would not be going over the survey results tonight because the consultant is going to do a very thorough job of that, talking about statistically significant findings, how, how the, the responses relate to demographic information about Kenmore, et cetera. But we wanted to give you these results. You're the first to see them. And to give you an opportunity to identify questions that you might have. For, certainly, the consultant will answer whatever questions you have next time when you have more detail. But if you had any preliminary questions that you wanted me to forward to the consultant so that they would be ready to respond on the 17th, that's the purpose for the agenda item tonight.
So I noticed you said initial observations too. Are you, are you thinking we should say, we should do those as well as questions for the consultants or just, just the questions tonight?
You're welcome to do either. I'm going to take good notes. And if your observations lead us to conclude that we should have the consultant address a particular question or topic, we can do that.
Okay. How would you like to do it, Lori? Should we maybe just go one by one through each, each slide with that?
Well, I would suggest that it be a little bit more free-form than that because I'm afraid if it goes slide by slide, we are going to move into analysis, and we don't have that at this point. What we need are your reactions, questions that you were particularly interested in, et cetera, because we don't have the analysis in front of you. Again, this was just a way to tell you, here are the raw results, and we're doing more work on that.
Okay. Anybody want to get started? Share some. Suzanne?
I have just a question or comment and a question about the wording that's, that's used here. For instance, the question two, where do you feel things are generally headed in Kenmore? I think the word things is, is very ambiguous. And so I'm just kind of questioning the validity of that question. And I felt like there were several other questions that had leading terminology that sort of either provided a more negative or more positive aspect of, of a particular, which is more important to you question. So I would be interested to understand more about how those questions were developed.
Okay. And, and I can immediately answer the first question, which is, where do you think, where do you think things are headed in Kenmore? That's a question that's been asked over the past several years in a number of surveys. So that particular question was chosen to reflect those earlier questions so that we can try to get a consistent response and look at where the community thought things were headed. So that's like a question that came from earlier surveys.
But who, I mean, you don't know whether the 1,100 people who took this survey were aware of the previous surveys. So I don't understand how they can know or feel, that's another feel, what things are, I guess.
Well, we didn't, I think the issue with this particular question was we didn't want to ask a different question. We didn't want to ask it a different way. So we're trying to, the, the question may not be ideal, but we didn't suddenly want to switch the question because we're looking at trends over time with the same question.
Okay, so. Will they provide then whether we're trending one way or another in their analysis?
I think we can look at those previous, PRR didn't do those previous surveys, but we, we can pull those. We can pull those results.
I think it would be interesting, I mean, if that's something that you're planning on looking at, is also the demographics of the people who have taken the survey. It would be interesting to understand how similar or dissimilar those are from previous surveys and, and the types of responses. I don't know if that's included as well.
All right.
Yeah, following up a little bit on what Suzanne said, I was, I was curious, and this may be part of their presentation or detail is, you know, thing, information about the demographics that are in here and how reflective they are of Kenmore as a whole. Looked like some things probably are others I wasn't as sure about. So maybe that's part of what they'll be sharing.
It is.
The representative nature of the.
Right.
Of the respondents, so.
That's definitely part of their analysis.
Okay, glad to, glad to hear that. And yeah, I would just add too, there were a few questions that did seem either leading or either or, like the one about, you know, do you want more dense housing as a priority or, or preserving trees? And it, I just kind of wondered about the methodology of asking such a, you know, I think there's a lot more nuance in, that is portrayed in that question. So I'd be curious to hear the consultant talk a little bit about how they address, you know, those kinds of concerns.
Right. And, and I might back up just for a minute to reinforce the fact that the survey was not designed to provide answers. The survey is not telling us what the answer to these questions is. The survey is providing us a sense of where the community is on difficult choices and options so that we can structure a public participation effort that will respond to where there are tensions in the community. So, and, and, and I would say that the tree question is a good one. We've heard a lot about the importance of trees in the community. But the question of housing, additional housing and trees, as we've discussed many times, is sometimes in conflict. So that is, for us, maybe a way to identify that that is a significant conflict in the community, and how do we approach that?
I just didn't want to seem like, you know, maybe there was, they were mutually exclusive. I see, I hear what you're saying, but.
Sure.
Go ahead, Nathan.
Hopefully, you can hear me all right. Okay, kind of going off of the same thing that both Suzanne and Mark said. The one question that stuck out to me most that I might want a little more explanation from, from the consultant, was question number four. They both mentioned leading, but this question seemed to be very extremely leading, at least in my opinion, when I read through it, about providing affordable housing, and then it used the examples of nurses and teachers. And I mean, I support affordable housing for nurses and teachers, of course. But how it was phrased, it sounds almost like you can't say no to that question, if that makes sense. And so I felt that that was a strong example of a leading question, just kind of cherry picking examples that they threw into that question and how it was phrased. Because I mean, once they used including, they could have, you know, attached other examples to that as well. But picking those two, I think, was, it felt very leading to me in how I interpreted it. So maybe a little more explanation on that question. But that, that was about it for me.
Others want to share? Yeah, go ahead, Tracy.
Mike, we can't hear you.
You can't hear me. Okay.
There we go.
Or Tracy.
No? Okay, great. Thank you. I also noticed, actually, I took the survey, which I'm not sure if that was allowed or not, but I did. And I noticed as I was taking it that many of the questions, I know that we were at, we were talking about when we were talking about the survey, that we might have to make trade-offs in our community. If something was important to us, we might have to give something else up. And I see that reflected in some of the questions. And I'm curious if that's why it was constructed that way. Lori, you did give some information about it being like wanting to find what their conflict points were to kind of guide community conversation, so I understand that. But it did have the feel to me as I was taking it that it was almost like a push-pull, like not a, not a, not a pole to gather information, but just as a pole to push people in a, in a direction. I guess this is kind of dovetailing what others have already said about, you're like, oh, I can't, I can't say I don't support nurses and teachers. So that question felt like it was pushing, pushing in a certain direction. Curious about that and about how, and any instances of that happening of, of respondents might affect how we're reading the, the results. And then also, I thought the contrast of the responses to question four and six were pretty striking to me. There were similar questions. They both had the element of expanding existing housing types, but the level of support flipped depending on.
Right.
It was framed. And I thought that was really interesting. So like, it was like people were supportive of different housing types when it came to economic equity, but then not so much when it came to diversity and equity. So I thought that was really interesting. I wonder if the.
The consultants have already pulled that out as an interesting difference.
And then, yeah, I did also notice the demographics struck me as interesting. It seemed like the respondents to the survey were overwhelmingly in single-family homes, homeowners, and fairly financially well-off. So I, again, had the same question about how representative that is of our community. And then I also wondered if we can do some outreach to other communities to get higher participation from those. So we are getting a more reflective idea of how our community feels about these issues.
Um, Lori, was the survey sent via the postal mail?
Yes, it was.
To everyone in Kenmore or just the?
To all residential addresses and PO boxes. In fact, two postcards were sent. There was an initial postcard that went to everyone, and then there was a second follow-up postcard about a week and a half later to invite people to participate if they hadn't already.
Yeah, just to add a little bit to Tracy's point, I was really struck by the, I think it's question 11, what best describes your home? The manufactured housing community had 0%. I don't know if that, the number is zero or, I mean, and I think, you know, based on what I recall from our manufactured housing project, there are certainly several hundred residents in those communities collectively. So that, that struck me as kind of a really glaring omission. So, yeah, just more, more information from the consultant on sort of the demographic representation there. Yeah, go ahead, Nathan.
So Lori, I got both postcards, but I guess I didn't realize that they were for the exact same survey. I didn't take it twice. I'm not saying that. But when they were sent out separately like that, I thought it was two different surveys when I saw them in the mail. I didn't read too closely into, at least on the second one, because I had just finished filling out the survey on the first one. But when I, when I saw that, that's what first initially struck me, was I thought that they were two separate surveys. And although I didn't take it twice, I'm curious to know if maybe there could have been duplicates at all. I don't, I don't think it'll be a large portion, but just how that, how I interpreted that, I wonder if there were other citizens that it may have come across the same way to them.
I think, I think the consultant can determine that. And the reason I know that is because on Friday, the Friday before the survey closed, there was an article in The Urbanist, which is a web newspaper. And the article invited people to, it included the survey, in fact, and then invited people to participate. And so that was very concerning to us because that, the people from other places also were notified. The Urbanist has a 16,000-person distribution. And so the consultant went back through and tried to weed out using IP addresses, I think, anyone who might have either participated, entered the survey twice, once saying, I'm from this community, when they'd be kicked out of the survey, but then re-entering, trying to say they were a Kenmore resident. So we've already done some scrubbing of the data to make sure that it wasn't affected by that information.
Okay, thank you. That's.
But I will ask them to, to double-check that.
When I've done past surveys, I think for King County, I did one where I went back in to, to share the link with my network, and it took me right back to, I used the same survey link, and it took me to like, you've completed the survey page. I think because it recognized my IP address. And I'm wondering if this consultant uses.
Yeah, I'm not sure it did that, but it was, it was two days before the survey closed on Sunday. That was the good news. And, and then they could go through and check.
I'm just, I'm speaking to the issue of if somebody had tried to do it twice.
Oh, oh, I see, not, right, right. Okay, so I will ask that question as well.
So I don't think that they blocked based on IP address because I know that my family shared one device and filled out the survey. And it was different people each time, but I, I don't think, it didn't block us. So I don't think it would have, that would have prevented duplicates, so that is central concern.
Okay.
Mike, looks like you're ready to say something. Go ahead. Mike, can you unmute?
He doesn't show as muted.
No, I'm, I don't, I was going to say something. Go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah, we still can't hear you, Mike. Ah, there you go.
Okay, right. As I said, I think, Mike, I know that my thoughts were pretty much consistent with what I've heard other folks talk about. I did take the survey myself, got my card, took the survey. And I had a feeling myself. I did take the survey myself, got my card, took the survey, and I had a feeling myself as I was going through this, that I was being asked a number of leading questions, which made it very difficult at some times to fill this out. And I think maybe mine and maybe some other folks' responses, that some people have already noted, where they don't seem to be consistent, may be a reaction to those rather leading questions. And I think that's important, because if the survey is going to help us inform what our comprehensive plan is going to be looking like, I think that we need to sort out this information, and looking at the changes to the comprehensive plan that we have on our next agenda item, I'm not sure we're ready to answer those. Because some of the answers to these questions would really go against some of the priorities that the city council has evidently recognized and set up, and were used to edit the current comprehensive plan. So I'm a little disturbed, and I think we need to have more information, and hopefully we'll hear that, more about that on the 16th.
Dwight, did you have something you wanted to share? I am sorry for catching you off there.
Looks like he's driving.
Yeah.
No, I didn't have anything to say.
Okay. Dennis, anything you want to, you want to add to?
No, I sense those same concerns, but I also recognize that it's never going to be perfect, even, and all we can do is continue with our process.
So one thing that might be helpful for the consultant, something for the 17th, would be for commissioners who had concerns about leading questions to particularly flag or to identify which ones seemed to be leading questions. That would be really helpful. I don't think, I hope that that wasn't every question, but that there were some, just so that I can let the consultant know that you all are going to talk about that. We can talk about it as staff. I mean, staff helped with the question identification, as did the city council. So it would be useful for us to know which specific questions were of concern. And I mean, I've heard that number four was one of them.
Do you want us to send you an email, Lori and Debbie? Is that, what's the best way to...
You can send me an email. If you know tonight, I mean, if you've already identified the questions, you can tell me tonight, and that would be best of all, but I'm not sure you have had that task in front of you, so.
Okay. Nathan, go ahead, and Dennis.
Another one similar to question four was question 10. Just cherry picking the examples used for one question, I feel like to keep it trying, not biased or not pushing or leading or framed in any way, that there probably shouldn't be examples. This one, it said baristas and food delivery drivers, which are, you know, nice jobs, but I think that may take away, that may take away compared to if those weren't there, those examples. So I think it was similar to number four, in the sense that it was structured the same way. Dennis, go ahead.
My comment was more on, I don't mind us highlighting who, what questions we thought were leading, but I'm also concerned that they didn't think some of them were leading. They need to be asking themselves what they think are leading questions or not. I mean, I didn't know quite what role they were trying to play in putting the questions together.
So staff helped with the questions. There's no, that's absolutely true. And, and the idea was, if you're asking somebody about people with lower incomes, how do you phrase that? How do you want to phrase that? I mean, a barista is a lower-income worker. A delivery person is a lower-income worker. A teacher makes a lot less than a tech worker. So how, how would you, I guess, I'm not sure, we were trying to provide examples so people could understand who made different, who had different levels of income, and so...
So why couldn't you have just stated the...
So garbage truck drivers, would that have changed how the responses happened? Or...
Could you say that the amount, under $50,000, or something like that, rather than identifying a specific job? Because I think jobs, job types, just like with the nursing and teacher, I think those are loaded, emotionally loaded, as are other specific, you know, specific descriptors like delivery drivers, food delivery drivers, and baristas. So I would think something more generic, maybe like their, the yearly salary or something. And then, on that same page, there's the smaller housing types, and that to me is vague. What's small to someone? What is that? Is that a tiny house? Or what? So I just thought there's a lot of, they're vague or leading. I think also number eight, increasing the number of housing units so Kenmore may get more transit. That's another one, I think, maybe keeping current housing density with existing transit options. I wasn't really sure what was being asked there, or whether it was relevant, the phrasing.
Felt like when I was taking this, that the inclusion of, this might, I may or may not be representative of...
We can't hear you very well.
Okay, I don't know what's going on. Can you, is that better? Is that better?
A little bit.
A little bit better? So I may or may not be representative of the community, but I felt like including specific categories of people like nurses and teachers and baristas, I felt like that did have like a humanizing effect on the question. I think, as Suzanne said, just putting like income brackets may have been... I don't know what the word I'm looking for is. Less emotional, more cut and dry? I don't know. Anyway, that didn't bother me so much, but it did, it did kind of, as I was taking it, I remember having the feeling of like, this is really a push-pull. Like, this is trying to, it felt like it had an agenda. And, and that's, you know, sometimes that's fine. I think you have to understand like what the purpose is. If the purpose of it was to kind of nudge the community in a certain way, then maybe that's what it did. But if the purpose was something different, then maybe we missed the mark. So I think part of evaluating the survey would be being really clear about what the purpose of the survey was, to then be able to evaluate, you know, how effective we were at meeting that purpose. And, you know, maybe, maybe the purpose of the survey was something different than what all of us are talking about here. I'm not, I'm not sure. Maybe that's something that needs clarification.
Go ahead, Mike.
It's Tracy. What I was thinking about, as we're going through this too, is I think probably as a group, we're probably representative of what the community's response to these questions would be. But I'm not sure exactly what the intent of these questions were, and what the people who wrote them, what they had intended to get out of asking these questions. But what I think we're hearing is that if we're representative of the community, there are a lot of confusion out there about where this was going, or what these questions are really trying to say. That bothers me, particularly if these are going to be the basis for moving forward with our comprehensive plan. Because you could go through a number of these questions and say, okay, well, this says we should affect this policy. Who steps down, you see another question, says, no, wait a minute, that seems to say the opposite thing. So what, what are we getting out of this? And I still do think, I really am concerned about question four, and another couple of other places people have talked about, where we seem to be creating a, almost an adversarial position between, do you want to allow equity in your neighborhood? Do you want to be good people? Or do you want to do something about these terrible, single-family neighborhoods and what they're doing? And what they're, I find that offensive myself, so...
I would say that I don't think there was a question that talked about offensive single families.
Having a community with mostly single-family detached homes at a higher price point, affordable of those with higher incomes, such as tech workers.
Well, I think that's a fact, right? Isn't, aren't they at a higher price point?
Or you want to have affordable housing for people at different income levels.
That's right, like teachers and others.
Why is that a trade-off?
Because of the difference in salaries. There are dramatic differences in salaries. It, to Suzanne's point...
Are you excluding one by having the other? There's a conclusion there that I don't necessarily understand. I don't understand.
I think it gets to the housing affordability question. And I, the other thing I will say is that, again, these are not the answers to the questions. The issue here is that this is a tension point in the community. I don't think there's a surprise here. We know through the accessory dwelling unit discussion that there's a tension in the community between preserving single-family neighborhoods and allowing more housing to come into the community. There's potentially a conflict there, and it revolves around affordable housing, and it's something that we need to discuss with the community. And I think the survey just indicates that indeed it is that tension that we thought existed.
And I absolutely agree with you on that.
So I think what we need to do, before we have the consultant get into the discussion, is clearly outline the purpose of why we were doing this survey, and what we were hoping to get out of it, to inform, because I think that will help. And I think if we do that first, and then have the consultant go through it, I think it will absolutely help. And I think also, a big piece of this was the public participation plan. And we went into this thinking that there is tension in some of these things, and asking the questions, we figured out, yes, there is. So then you have to figure out for public participation, how do you kind of go in there to try and address that tension? So there's an education piece in there before you even get to figuring out what the solution is. So again, the survey is not intended to say, you know, no changes in single-family, or allow changes in single families, basically to say, yeah, we were right, there is some tension there, so when we come forward with public participation, maybe we need to outline some of the pros and cons, and then bring forward the options for discussion. So I think if we outline the purpose and what we were hoping to get out of that, to feed into the participation plan, I think these questions may make more sense. And I think that's sort of been clear to me from this discussion. And also, you know, in terms of the wording of the questions and the phrasing of the questions, I mean, we spent a lot of time to try and have the right kind of words in there, and as you can imagine, there's always going to be 100 other choices that you could put in there. And I think Dennis said, there's never really a perfect question or a perfect survey. So I think we'll definitely commit to doing that on the 17th, and hopefully that will help.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'd be interested, I can't remember when the postcards were sent out, whether it described a purpose for the few of you who took the survey. Do you remember having a sense of why you were taking it, or what, what was being asked of you, or what the intent was, or anything like that? Or how did you approach it? I'm just curious.
My recollection was that it kind of highlighted the comprehensive plan element. Lori and Debbie can probably clarify that better, but yeah, that was, that was, that was my takeaway, that was what I remember, but it's been a few weeks, so my memory could be a little faulty, so.
Yeah. I think maybe a good example is the tree question, because we really saw a dramatic answer to the tree question. And what that tells us is perhaps that the, the answer is not there, but that's a significant community issue, and that issue needs to be part of the community discussion about how growth and development happens in Kenmore. So it's not, we will never cut another tree, that I don't think is the answer, but, to the question, but what it says to us is, this is an important issue to the community, and we need to make sure we're thinking about that issue, and talking with the community more about that issue, providing information about that issue as we move forward.
Well, I think that's a well-made point, and I think the issue about trees and development and comprehensive plan is a little easier for most people to grasp, because they kind of sort of understand it, not necessarily all the details, but they know what trees are. So my point to be made is that I don't think a lot of people know what affordable housing really is. And unfortunately, I don't think, and lead on to the survey, you can't say that teachers and nurses are the same as baristas and the rest of the folks. Both of them, they're not, they're not equitable with regard to affordable housing. It's two types of things. And a lot of people really don't know that there are different classes of affordable housing, and it's very complicated. And so I'm a little concerned that, and it's been stated already over the last 50 minutes of the, how that, that push-pull, which is, that's a nice way of saying it, but it, I think it, that, that nurse and teacher and the barista and that really kind of screwed up the survey a bit with regard to the understanding of our, of our citizens and residents in the community. So I mean, if it kind of touched us in the wrong way, just imagine how the, you know, people that are not educated in comprehensive plan, or affordable housing, or any of this other stuff, it's really difficult. So I'm all in favor of all the comments about the concerns of, of the job titles. I thought those were inappropriate. I mean, some nurses, I have a nurse next door to me that I know makes over $100,000 a year. And, and I know that there's some teachers, not a whole lot of teachers, but there are some teachers that make $70,000 to $80,000 a year. And that's not, those, that's not a barista. Even with all the tips they could make, they're not going to make that kind of money. So, and there's other people that make middle income than just, you know, like teachers and nurses. So that's all I have, I wanted to mention to you, is how do we actually describe in a short, sweet, but, but accurate way what affordable housing is, and what are the different types of affordable housing? Because the different levels is what I mean, you know? And, and lastly, one more point, and that is, if you look at definitions of affordable housing, you know, some, no matter what we do in some of the neighborhoods, even if it, you were to put a townhouse where there's a single-family resident, or a fourplex where there are two, or something like that, the rent for one of those, just to make up the cost of building it, is not going to be affordable. It's, so, that's, I don't believe that's going to happen. It's just economically not, not going to work. And I'd be interested in seeing what the rents are downtown for... And I, I'd be interested in seeing what the rents are downtown for, in the apartments. That we have all those large apartments. And what are the rent rates right now, the rack rates for those? And to look and see what is really affordable down in our central area. Thank you, I'm sorry.
That'll be, that's okay, we'll be talking about that. And to Debbie's point, what we can do on the 17th is discuss, provide more information on the purpose of the survey. And, and then that sort of is a prelude to the consultant presenting the results. So I've got a lot of food for thought here, which I will pass along to the consultant. And then again, we will work on information to provide about purpose. So we'll continue the discussion with more analysis on the 17th. Does that sound good?
Yeah, anybody else have any thoughts for, for this purpose that we've been working on tonight? Okay, I think we're, I think we're good on that one then, Lori, go ahead.
Okay. So the next topic on your agenda tonight is the vision statement. So the vision statement is pretty much the first page in the comprehensive plan. And what it does is describe what Kenmore will be at the end of this 20-year planning period. It's the vision for the community. And it was last updated in 2015. And at that time, when it was updated, I think some of you participated. I think Mike, you were there and, and Mark and, and others. Anyway, the, the phrases were sort of put in a specific order. Like from top priority to lesser priority in terms of direction for the comprehensive plan. So with this, this is staff's attempt to work on the vision. And we did a few things. We reordered the phrases and there's a note at the bottom of the attachment that indicates that we reordered it relative to city council priorities. And then we also, and in the memo, I identified the changes we made. So that we took out, for example, in the clause about downtown, we took out identifiable downtown because staff felt that we had it, we had accomplished that. And although certainly there'll be more development over the next 20 years and presumably it will become more and more robust. We felt that the end result, the walkable downtown was the emphasis. We also removed the word multifamily in that clause because the manufactured housing communities are also downtown. We added phrases about affordable housing and, well, there were already phrases about affordable housing and diversity, but we strengthened those in relation to the city council priorities. And then we took out some phrases that we felt were ill-defined and could be perceived to be exclusionary. And we described that in the memo. We replaced the word citizens with residents, just as we've done on our agenda items, our agenda bills. And so we can go through this or you can have a more free-form discussion, however you want to approach it. And I do think the bit, we're not settling on the vision statement tonight. We couldn't possibly do that. So this is a first cut, first blush, first reaction. And as we go through this process, we'll be refining and potentially revising the vision statement as we go along. And we hear more from the community.
Before it becomes the final.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead, Nathan.
I like a lot of these changes and I like what was said in a lot of this. I'm curious to know if we should hold off on, I guess, thinking too in-depth on it until we get the results back or we talk with the consultant about the survey. Because the, the thing that stuck out to me and why I'm asking this is, is the one on embracing the role as a high-capacity transit community. And I believe that there's a question on the poll that addressed expanding transit. And it, I may need to go back and double-check that. But just making sure that the, the new additions and edits kind of match what we're hearing back from the community in terms of the, the survey.
And I, I want to re-emphasize that the purpose of the survey was not to answer the question. Purpose of the survey was to identify the tensions and conflicts and where more public involvement was needed. So I would really caution in a vision state, or developing a vision statement based on the survey results. I don't think that's necessarily reflective of where we're going to end up in this process. I think the survey is to feed into the public participation plan and help us work with the community to really refine what their perspectives are on these topics.
I, I guess to kind of clarify what I'm saying is, I'm not saying we should structure everything on the survey, but it looks like that point about high-capacity transit community was added in totally new. It looks like the whole thing was highlighted, like it was all added.
Right, it is all new.
And, and if we're going to have a discussion with the community later on, do we want to be taking a position or a side now? When there could be indication that the community may not feel this way? I'm not saying we should draft this, the vision statement based on, on the survey, but maybe hold off on adding that right now until we get a better sense of what the community is, is feeling?
Um, I, I certainly think the question about transit is related. Kenmore has already been assigned its role as a high-capacity transit community. That's really just.
Lori, you're kind of breaking up, at least on my, I can't, we can't.
Oh, I'm sorry, you know, there's a thunderstorm going on at my house. I don't know if there is at your house. But I just heard thunder. So I'm sorry, it's the airwaves or whatever. Anyway, what I was going to say is that.
Oh Lori, it's just happening around you.
Yeah. It's an isolated thunderstorm, as they say, right?
Right. Vision 2050 has already said that we're a high-capacity transit community. So I don't really think that's discretionary. Other things about that, and the city has already made a commitment to bus rapid transit. But if we're concerned about Kenmore Air or the Cross Lake Ferry or something like that, I mean, you could modify this, you could soften it or something like that. But we don't want to go too far afield from our newly adopted role as a high-capacity transit community because of the bus rapid transit.
And I agree with that, Lori, I, I agree with you there. And I think, you know, having specific names like Kenmore Air Harbor, I think that puts the city in a position. And I, I don't know what's going to happen in 20 years. Maybe Kenmore Air Harbor will move their headquarters to Lake Union to their other facility. Or kind of move out, I, I, I hope not, I don't think so. But having specific names might put the city in a position and it might be more beneficial to us, I guess, to have these as guiding, you know, visions as, as opposed to kind of making those set, set decisions and picking names and saying names and that kind of thing.
Yeah, I, I agree with that and same with the Cross Lake Ferry. I'm just wondering if there's a more generic way to reference a variety of forms of transportation or something.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking along those lines too, like, you know, all form, all forms of, of public transit. Yeah, I don't know why we would necessarily single out these specific ones, even including bus traffic transit. I mean, there's certainly other, other important forms of transit as well today, so.
Right, and Ben, the, the other one that I was thinking about, based on the citizen comments about the corner stores, is the one that talks about meet their daily needs without driving. I'm in favor of that and I think I under, you know, I, I know where we're headed with that. But I'm not sure about that phrasing, if that again makes people think about the neighborhood stores or something in a negative way.
Go ahead, Nathan.
Kind of going off of that, that one, it, it, when I read it to myself out loud, it kind of sounded a little funky. I'm not saying it's bad and I kind of, I agree with the intent there. But maybe it would make more sense to break that into two parts potentially. And saying something like residential neighborhoods and provides opportunities for residents to meet their daily needs, stop. And then maybe having another point committed to making the city walkable and more bike and pedestrian friendly. In that way, they can, those two visions can work together, but they're not kind of jammed as one. And I think that that would allow the city to expand on both of those visions separately, how they need to, while still covering that intent. But maybe give the city a little more room and make it flow a little bit better, if that makes sense.
So there's a bullet point, like two up from that one, Nathan, that talks about providing safe and reliable and effective system of street sidewalks, bikeways, trails, transit routes, linking significant local and regional destinations. I don't know if it would be a modification of that, that, that you're possibly suggesting or another one more specific to driving.
I, I mean, we, we can play with the wording later, but maybe that intent of having those two kind of items, meeting daily needs for residents in one and then making the city walkable. We, we can add that, I, I don't know, you know, I'm, we can spend a little more time later on, kind of hammering that out. But maybe it would flow better and capture the idea better if, if that kind of last part was added on somewhere else. Well, still accomplishing our vision because we'd have both points of walkable and meeting daily needs. But I think they feel a little more separate and I, putting them together, it just kind of felt a little, it didn't flow, flow very well or, or I think captured the, the greater idea. I think we could expand more and instead of just needs being walkable, we can make the whole city walkable for, you know, everything. And, but we can play with that later. I just think that would help us accomplish more of our vision if it was a little separate.
Dwight, go ahead.
Okay, so the first easy one out of the gate is the bullet number twos, which I think is not necessarily strong enough. But I'm going to leave my co-commissioner Tracy to, I'm sure she's got some thoughts on that one. And she's much more articulate than I am. But the second item is to go back to affordable housing and that first statement. And I, I appreciate this, that what is really, I think, meant as what was supposed to be said. But when I see offers and I leave off attractive, but I say, offers affordable housing for all residents, emphasize regardless of income. So, so if I'm a millionaire is, or making $200,000, $300,000, should I have affordable housing for a $200,000, $300,000 person? I, I'm sure that's not what we want to do, but it's an awkward way of saying what I think is really the intent here. So I think we should work on honing that down to say exactly what we mean. So there's no funny misunderstandings about how that can be taken.
So how, how would you suggest?
I, I, I'm not into wordsmithing tonight, but I, I, it goes back to my concern about definitions of affordable housing. And people who are making $150,000 to $200,000 a year in a household are not what we're looking for when we usually talk about affordable housing. So I guess that's what I'm, so I just, you know, I'm, I'm just bringing it up that we, there's something to work on and I, and.
So affordable, affordable housing in this context is just affordable to residents. It doesn't really, it's not affordable housing in the sense of subsidized housing or something like that. It just says, offers affordable housing for all residents regardless of income. So if you were a millionaire, you could afford housing, or if you weren't a millionaire.
You could afford housing if you're a millionaire. That's not, that, that's not our problem.
Right, but this is the vision, this is what we have 20 years from now.
I actually had a specific thought, I, I, with some of what Dwight said there, I, I read that. Didn't quite get to, I think what you're trying to say is that we want it to be available for all. It does seem to sort of focus on, you know, the, the quote-unquote affordable. So I, I really like actually the word diverse being in there somewhere. Because I think that also speaks to what we're trying to keep, but also including affordable housing for all residents. So I, I like the word diverse and choice, I know you, you took it out there. But I think that's, those, those concepts are pretty important too, in my, in my, in my opinion, so.
So a suggestion to add that, offers a diversity of housing types. To provide a choice of affordable housing for all residents.
Certainly including affordable housing, however you want to define, describe that, for all residents, so.
Right.
That's my wordsmithing thought. Tracy, go ahead. Waiting to say.
I actually was, I know I'm jumping the hand-raising line, but I was just, I was thinking about what Dwight was saying and I had like an idea about how to, to word it, that I think that that shit may have passed. But let me try it. Offers attractive housing for residents of all income levels? Dwight, does that? Eh?
Why do we need attractive in there?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sold on that one either.
Okay, I actually like attractive and I was going to say that next because I feel like everybody deserves housing, but everybody also deserves.
Decent housing.
Decent housing, yes, who said decent?
I did.
Yes, Dwight, yes. It, it's like, we're not, we don't want to put. Yeah, we, I want to maintain a certain like standard of, of human dignity and worth. And I, I think attractive to me signals that we care about the surroundings of everyone. I think like a lot, like about how, like our surroundings, our physical environment, it matters to our health and wellbeing and to our, our mental health. Like if I live, when my house is cluttered and messy, like I don't feel good mentally and emotionally. I think if I had to live in like housing where everything was broken and falling apart, like that was what I could afford, I would, you know, I don't think that's going to support the mental health of our community. So that's why I like attractive.
Tracy, why don't we say decent instead of attractive? Or maybe not decent, but the thing with attractive is I feel what's attractive to me is not attractive to you and not attractive to Dwight. And I feel like that word doesn't quite grasp your idea of decent or of livable or of good housing. I mean, I, I feel like there's better words in there and, and yeah, attractive doesn't quite achieve what we're trying to get at with that.
Diversity is a good term to get in there though somewhere. I'm, I'm with you, Mark. In addition to what Tracy's and everyone else is saying, but don't want to forget that diversity comment. That's good.
Yeah, I hear you and I appreciate all these contributions and being able to like talk this out loud. I, I think I don't, I, the reason, I'm still like liking attractive. And I think the reason is like, when I go into, I'm going to, I'm going to pick on some corporations if that's, okay. Like when I go into an Office Depot and like the ceilings are all high and it's got those like lowered, I don't even know what that ceiling type is where it's like corrugated weird stuff. And like their fluorescent lights and every those like steel aisles and like stuff everywhere. Like that doesn't feel good to me. And there's something about the aesthetics, like the aesthetics of our places matter, I think. And I know this is a little, it's, it's, maybe it's not a basic human need. Like it's not like the basic shelter that we all need and it's, it's, it's more than basic shelter and it's more than just food. And it's more than just food, you know, like our base, at the base of Maslow's hierarchy of needs, like yes, you can have housing and that can meet your basic need, but I do feel like there is also a human need for aesthetically pleasing spaces. And that's, I think, what I'm trying to get at and talk about and talk out with you all.
Yeah, Tracy, I totally agree with that. I think maybe it's a wordsmithing exercise. I think, you know, like, like Nathan, I think attractive is a little too subjective for, for a vision. So if there's another, when, again, we don't need to decide that tonight, but I think your point is very well taken. And it'd be nice if we could find a word that fits that definition. So that's not attractive. That's mine. Go ahead, Mike.
You're on mute, Mike.
Got an apple in your mouth, Mike.
You missed my cute opening, but I'll plow on anyway. You know, a 20-year vision is supposed to be aspirational. I worry a little bit about, is there a line sometime you can cross that just sets up the city and its residents for trouble? And the first word in bullet one bothers me. What does it mean to offer housing? Are we going, are we committing Kenmore to developing public housing, publicly supported housing? What does, what does that really mean? I don't think, I'm sure that isn't the intent, but if you offer something, you have to be careful. That, that's kind of a touchy word. What I'd suggest, and again, I apologize for wordsmithing, but how about language, something along the lines supports availability of attractive, affordable, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, we do have that line way down at the bottom. It has clear design standards, creating attractive, our beloved word, functional and enduring buildings and places. So, I mean, we did use it down there.
Yeah, I think the key word is, in this is affordable.
So I, now, now I'm confused because I've heard two different perspectives. I've heard a few commissioners say take out affordable, word affordable. And maybe housing for all residents rather than regardless of income at, at at different incomes or something like that. So should the word affordable be in this phrase somewhere? That's a place to start for me to wordsmith.
Well, it's got to be somewhere.
I, I agree. It has to be in there somewhere. I don't know that it needs to be the only, you know, adjective there before housing, but.
I think you almost had it before, Mark. I'm reading it. If, if we take out offers and puts in support and we, we leave in supports a diversity of housing types to provide a choice of attractive housing affordable to all residents.
Yeah, I think, I think that sounds better, Debbie. I think for me where the confusion was, or what I perceive the confusion being is the difference between housing that every, that there's a house everyone could afford compared to affordable housing as a type of housing.
Okay, I think, I think that's what we're trying to get to. Is, I think that's what we're really trying to get to, is that everybody has the opportunity. We would, the aspiration is that everybody would have the opportunity to be able to live in Kenmore.
Right.
Well, another word instead of offers is allows.
I think I like supports a little more than a allow, allows. Seems like, I mean, the other side of it is you're not allowed.
I mean, it's our, our, what I, when I think of allows, I think that our city is going to provide for design and, and building codes and things that'll allow for these versus offering. I mean, I, I was just, you know, it's just a thought. It's probably not that good of a thought, who knows?
So maybe if we can, if we can, if we can reach agreement that the, if the intent of this first statement, then we can wordsmith it. I think that would be easier. So if we, is, if we agree that, or can we agree that the intent of this is that there will be housing choices that people can, that people can afford, not meaning affordable housing. That's, is, I think that's what we're trying to get to. We can, we can come up with the words, but if that's sort of the, if that's the direction that we want to go in and take out the concern that when we say afford means some sort of definition of affordable housing, it means more that if people want to come and live here, they can choose to come and live here.
There will be diverse housing that accommodates that. Dennis, you had, it looks like you had your hand raised.
I was just going to suggest something like the word encourages a diversity of. Because what we want is a set of regulations and things in place that encourages that diversity without saying specifically what that is. One, one alternative anyway.
Go ahead, Tracy.
So I'm going to make what might be a pretty strong statement. And it's just going to be what I, I personally would like this bullet point to reflect. And actually how I read it, because this is what I wanted to reflect. But I would like it to reflect the idea that we value human life and we value community and, and that housing is a basic human right in Kenmore. That's personally what I, I would like that to reflect. That housing is such a foundational, important thing for people that we are going to do everything we can to make it possible for everyone to have a home. And I would, and, and then I do think it's also important that, that there be an aesthetic consideration too. So that we're not just putting people in little like little teeny boxes and saying, here, you have a home. And it's like plywood and, you know, whatever. So that, that would be my highest aspiration for that, what I would personally like it to reflect. And again, I know it might be a strong statement. That's where I am.
Anybody, anybody have any thoughts on that?
It didn't need to be a conversation style.
You know, there's a lot of great ideas in that, and I think that it's going in a good direction. I just, the wordsmithing, the longer we do this is, gets more.
Well.
But I like your idea.
I think it's implicit in the language, but Tracy, you're saying it needs to be explicit, the idea of a basic human right. Is that what I'm?
No, no, I don't think that we need to say those words that I said at all. Like I, I was just saying, I think Laurie or Debbie asked like what we want, like the, what we wanted that statement to reflect, like the underlying value. And that for me is the underlying value that I, I personally would like that statement to reflect. And that I actually was reading into it because, like I said, because like that's my underlying value. And so that's, you know, we read into some words, like what, we, we bring ourselves to the words that we read. And that's, that's how I was reading it anyway. I'm just making that explicit to you all and hoping that that would like help us frame, like what, what do we want that to say? Like what's conceptually is important to us so that, you know, Debbie and Laurie could go back and then do the wordsmithing without us. And come back. Because I agree, I don't know that we can wordsmith all of these things all together right now. My child would be very upset about that because he wants to come home.
So what I heard is encourages and supports diversity of housing types and choices that people who live here can afford. And then we're still looking for a word other than attractive to acknowledge sort of the type of housing that might be acceptable. So unless, I hear that I'm totally off track, I will go away and try again.
It sounds like a decent idea.
Oh, really funny.
Now, in that first, in the bold letters up top there, as we were nitpicking a little bit, so I was, I started to nitpick the last sentence. We see Kenmore as a fun, which is fine, vibrant, which is fine waterfront. Now, our waterfront, most of us are waterfront, but there's a whole lot of other parts of us that's more forested or other than just waterfront. So maybe we can add something that would be a little more inclusive to help those of us that are, can't see the water from our house. It's just a thought, you know? And also I think it, it also embraces some of the environmental issues that are outside of the waterfront.
Why not delete waterfront and just have vibrant community?
Well, I like, I do like the concept of waterfront is important to Kenmore. We, you're at the top of the lake and you've got the slough, you go a lot of, you know, there is waterfront. But it's not the only Kenmore of. So I think it is important. I'm not saying it's not important. I just think that there's more to Kenmore. And some of us are really concerned about the Kenmore.
Yeah, go ahead, Tracy.
But Dwight, how I read that, I, I agree with you. I think the, our waterfront is very important to our identity here in Kenmore. I think a lot of community members are very attached to that identity, rightfully so. And like you pointed out, we're at a very significant point in the lake geography, geographically being right at the top. And we have the mouth of this membership or so, like the waterfront is, I think, a significant part of our identity. But the way that I read this, and maybe it hooks into some of your concerns. I read this as valuing our waterfront for its significant local and regional asset reads very commercially to me, like that it, it reads as, as viewing our waterfront as a resource that we that we're going to use it for human need, you know, not commercially, but, but maybe also recreationally. And I don't think it speaks so much to maybe environmental concerns about the waterfront. But if that's a standalone, but that might be, like that might be something that is important to Kenmore, that people be able to like put their kayak in the slough and, and that we do have maybe restaurants overlooking, like, I don't know. Like that could be a standalone point, but I do feel like, can I just launch into what I wanted to say or am I helping? I don't know. Did other people, I don't want to take, I don't want to hop the line. Okay, so I just want to say overall, first of all, because I haven't had a chance to, I love these recommended changes. I thought it was really thoughtful work. I feel like, you know, I, I could tell that you were considering what council, how council had given direction. I feel like a lot of the changes having to do with, you know, you talked about phrases like supporting the character of single-family neighborhoods and so on. Like I thought that was really thoughtful, like equity work, and I really appreciated that. I love the, I love replacing citizens with residents like that. This is all, it makes me feel like we're moving in a, you know, an inclusive equitable direction in Kenmore. I really liked all that a lot. And I thought each statement that was revised felt really crisp and tight and read really well. So I just really, I really liked it all. I thought on the climate change issue, I would like to see that more in an active tense. It says has contributed to. I don't think in 24 years, 23 years or whatever, that we're going to be done with climate change. Like we're in this and we're going to be working with it for maybe the rest of human existence. So I would love to see that not has contributed to, but continues to contribute to efforts to, I don't know, like again, I don't want to, I don't know if I want to wordsmith it exactly, but I would like it to read as something like, this is an issue that we are ongoing in this community going to be addressing. Like right now and in 20 years, and then maybe even after that, because we probably will still have to. So that was on that. And then on the second one, protects natural and environmentally sensitive areas, significant open space trees and their in-water quality. That's all great. But I do feel like, so the first thing I'd like to do, I would love it if we could call out salmon in particular in the second statement. And again, and this, this is a recommendation for a specific word add. And I have some reasons that I'd like to do that. One, salmon are iconic to the Pacific Northwest. They are culturally important to the first peoples of this land. Several species of salmon are listed as federally threatened. So we do a lot of work in this region on salmon recovery because of that. We're required to, we're mandated to do the salmon recovery because they're listed as threatened. They're a keystone species. So all of you might be familiar with what a keystone species is, but just in case, I'm just going to say it explicitly. So other species in an ecosystem largely depend on keystone species. So if the keystone species was removed, then the whole ecosystem would change dramatically and may even collapse. And I think that we're seeing this right now with our southern resident killer whales. They're struggling for many reasons, but one of the main reasons is because their preferred food, Chinook salmon, there's not a lot of it. In fact, I just heard a report that, that the southern resident killer whales are starting to eat more chum than they have in the past because there just aren't enough Chinook. But then what happens when there aren't enough chum? Like we, we could lose the southern residents if we don't, if we lose salmon. And, and, and things cascade like that with keystone species. And I talk about salmon a lot and I want to make it clear about why I do that because I think sometimes it can seem like, like this crazy person talking about salmon so much. Why, why is it matter? So I care about salmon because I feel like they're a really representative of how we're all interconnected. Because they, they have their habitat stretch, it's just so many different ecosystems and connects back. So those salmon are connecting us to the ocean. They actually bring back nutrients from the ocean and deposit them on our land here. So they're connecting our terrestrial ecosystem to the ocean. And I really care about the whole and I care about people. And I want us all, people and other species that we live with to have a healthy home. And I think if we're working for salmon, then we're actually working for ourselves as well. Because if we can give salmon what they need, then we'll have what we need too. So for all those reasons, I would love to call out salmon specifically here. And, and I think that's also as a way to give this one a little bit more tooth. Like, because I think, I do understand that we're in an urban growth area and that we need to provide more density. And I think that's really important actually for salmon, super important for salmon that we do that. So that we're not developing in like North Bend and stuff like that. But at the same time, salmon do need the habitat here in our stretch of Kenmore to be healthy. Because if they don't, they need healthy habitat at all parts of their life cycle. And this place that we're in is very significant at the top of the lake with the mouth of this manish river being right here. And all that needs to be really healthy for salmon to be healthy. And if salmon are healthy, like I said, then we're going to be healthy too. So I would love to see something that, you know, my, my, I guess my smallest, lowest level ask would be to put salmon in there. And then my higher level ask would be like, how can we write this so that really looking at our ecosystem, not just through the lens of people, but through other species that we live with? How can we do that and create really vibrant like wildlife corridors, like maybe all along the Spanish River or Swamp Creek? So that we can live with species and then put, you know, put our density all around that, you know, like how can we, how can we create a whole that's good for everyone? And I think like, thinking about the environment and thinking about it in a new way, I think we need to do that. I love in the Growth Management Act that we're required to care for our critical areas, but it's not enough. And I think like with the legal definition of what a critical area is, like it's not, that's not actually often what salmon need. Like they need more. It's not, not quite enough. Yeah, and I don't know quite where it went with the, the Growth Management Act House Bill that was. Yeah. And I don't know quite where it went with the, the Growth Management Act House Bill that was trying to insert the language about requiring not just no net loss of ecological function of our land, but requiring that gain of ecological function. I don't know where that went. I know it was in the, in one of the, the House or the, I don't know which, where it was, but I don't know if it ever moved out. I did some research, I couldn't figure it out. But I think that's actually a really important concept that I would like to see Kenmore embrace, regardless of whether or not it gets put into the Growth Management Act this time around. That we really are trying to restore the ecological functions of our land. I think that would be good for us and for species like salmon, but also good for climate. Because I think if we can restore some of the ecological functions of our land, that will help us be resilient in this climate collapse that we're living through. So, yeah.
Tracy, I've heard about five different ideas here. And I need to hear from some of the other commissioners as well. I heard everything from add salmon to the second bullet point to write a new bullet point that really talks about the integration of people and other animals in an environment that's supportive of all species. And, and then I, I heard the one comment about making sure that efforts to slow climate change are on, emphasize that those are ongoing, that that hasn't happened. So do other commissioners have a reaction?
Go ahead, Nathan.
Sorry about that. I didn't get a chance to speak on the last point. I'm going to address that really quick and then I'll jump to address Tracy's comments as well. First, I want to go back to the waterfront community statement. I heard one or two commissioners saying that they didn't like that word waterfront community. And I interpreted it as a geographical label, not as anything more. I didn't interpret it as commercial. I didn't interpret it as only specific to the people who live along the waterfront. I interpreted it as Kenmore is a waterfront city. It's a waterfront community. So is Lake Forest Park. So is Seattle. So is Kirkland. Because we live along the water. We don't live in the mountains. There's mountain communities like Leavenworth, you know, they're not waterfront communities, but that's just, that was my take on it. So I would be in support of keeping that in there because we are a waterfront community. It's just a geographical label. And I don't think it had any other kind of connotation to it. Jumping to Tracy's comments, I agree that we should change the climate focus to being an ongoing thing, because as of right now, it is an ongoing thing. I don't believe that, you know, it, it, we probably won't solve it in 20. That would be a great goal to have, and that would be, would be an awesome thing to do. But realistically speaking, I think as of right now, what we have, it, it, it should be worded as an ongoing thing. I also agree that we should, you know, could have wording in there protecting species and different animals and, and environment. I, I think that that could be kind of put into one kind of general bullet point. And that way, that can be our strong point, instead of diluting that idea across multiple bullet points. I think we can have one strong one that we can lean up on. My, I, I support salmon, but my concern with calling them out specifically, my concern with calling them out specifically is that we would then be neglecting other species critical in our area and other keystone species as well. I know blue herons are not a keystone species, but the, the, the blue heron rookery in Kenmore is a huge aspect of our city, and it's something that members of our commission in the past worked very hard to protect and preserve. So I guess my feelings on this would be, I, I don't think it's feasible, at least it's just a vision statement to address all species that are found within Kenmore, but maybe having, kind of incorporating that into a stronger, broader, all species kind of thing. And we can rely on that when we create policy later on in support of protecting salmon, or also use that same point later on if we want to protect, or when we want to protect blue herons, or when, and when we want to protect other species. And I think limiting ourselves and constraining ourselves to one species of, you know, Chinook salmon or salmon in, in general can restrict our ability to use that same power elsewhere. And I think it would be better for, for the, the city to, to have that point used in, in a broader sense. Again, I'm not against salmon. But I think looking at this as a vision statement, it should be a little more vague. We decided to take out Kenmore air because we felt that was too specific and rely on transit and talk about transit. I think this might be a similar thing, where instead of specifically focusing on one species, we can, we can broaden it to the environment and in the, the native species that we have here. I think that would be a very productive thing, and, and I feel that we could use it in a multifaceted way and use it on other species later on. Those were just my takes. I know it was a lot of points, and so I was commenting on a lot of things here. But yes, sorry. Yeah, my bad.
Go ahead, Mike.
Not bad at all, Nathan. Question for Debbie and Lori and maybe Mark. I think it was last year, we spent a lot of time on our docket, working on, I think it was the environmental element, where we went through the different priority species as well as other ecological issues. And we updated that fairly recently. I, I think that may accomplish what both Nathan and Tracy are looking for. If we could reference that particularly in the prologue to our comprehensive plan, something that says that Kenmore is committed to blah, blah, blah. Am I off base there, Debbie or Lori? Is that?
I.
I may not be quoting the right element.
I, I'm, I'm sure other commissioners might want to weigh in. And I think what we have to sort of remember for the vision statement is these are very, very broad statements that kind of set the stage for the chapters that come for the comprehensive plan, which then set the stage for the implementing regulations. So the vision statement has to be broad. So I think that Nathan was on the right track there to sort of take that, what a vision statement is, it needs to be broad. And whether the commission wants to add a statement in there, whether it's about protecting species, protecting habitat, protecting the environment, with a focus more on the, the natural side of things rather than people. Obviously, those, those are not the words that would go into it, but I'm trying to sort of get to more of the intent is that if that's where you're trying to go, we can kind of come up with something like that to reflect it.
Go ahead, Dennis.
I'm going to go back to my old comment. I think that putting waterfront in the preamble just is the wrong focus. It seems to me we've got a reference to the waterfront in the fifth paragraph of vision. And that's what we should beat up, beef up if we want. But the top one at least is talking about, if you take out waterfront, the community, the, the people. And I'm afraid when you say waterfront, somebody can easily say, but I have no waterfront.
Yeah, I tend, I tend to agree with Dennis on that specific point as well, just from my own point of view. It is, it is referenced below, and, and I think that is a good, good distinction. I really appreciate what Tracy said. That's extremely eloquent and obviously very knowledgeable perspective you're, you're coming from, Tracy, about salmon. But I, I guess I do kind of agree with kind of Nathan's point about trying to make a more general point about not only species, but Debbie raised a really good point. Habitat is really what species, you know, what Kenmore can do to preserve species is provide, you know, the proper habitat. So I would, I would agree with that sort of general approach and, and not specifically call out any particular species that, that inhabit our, our community with us. So, so that's my thought. Anybody else have thoughts on, on this, the second bullet here? Lori, do you have a sense of how that might be based on what you've heard, how it might be?
Yeah, I, I think in this particular case, that do a, an early straw poll.
I'm sorry.
So I would like to know how many commissioners want to take out the word waterfront in the preamble?
Well, I never said I wanted to take it out.
Right, so you.
I wanted, I, I.
You wanted to add something.
Yeah, a little more expansive, meaningful. I, I, I see both sides of this, and all I was feeling like Dennis more aptly put it is there's a bunch of other community here than just those at the waterfront.
I, I, I understand the argument, but I have no direction. Because I don't have, I have individual commissioners with opposite perspectives. So I, I would hope that I might be able to get at least a very preliminary consensus from the commissioners. Take it out, make it more expansive, or leave it in.
Oh, now you have three choices. Okay.
Well, I think Dwight brought up the other choice.
Do you want to have an informal vote then? Okay, so who's, who's in favor of keeping it as it is now with the word, you know, fun, vibrant waterfront community? Who wants to keep that as it is? So I'm counting two. Who wants to take, take, who wants to, I'm sorry, Tracy, what, what was your?
I, so by where you mean, so there's could somebody please point me to exactly which statements we're looking at?
It's in the very first paragraph. It's the preamble to all of the phrases that have bullets in front of them.
The bottom line.
Very last statement says, in 2044, we see Kenmore as a fun, vibrant waterfront community that. And then all the bullets point, bullet points start. And there's been a request to take out the word waterfront, or make it more expansive, or leave alone.
Thank you. So it's just that particular sentence in the.
Just that one.
That's all we're.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
So I saw, I think I saw two hands raised to keep it as is. Who wants to take it out entirely then? Okay.
So one, so it sounds like you want it modified to be more expansive. Is that?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to, my personal vote to make it more modified, to be expansive. I'm, I'm.
Are you talking about modified in the preamble?
Yes.
The preamble, correct.
That line. Yes, I'm, I'm with that.
So who wants to modify it? Raise your hand if you want to modify it in some fashion.
Lauren, yes.
Okay.
So that's a plurality, it looks like.
Correct. Okay, so we will modify waterfront to make it more expansive.
There you go.
Great. And then in terms of the environmental policy.
Before you move on, could I just make one comment, Lori? Please ignore this if it makes things more difficult. But the, the key, I know you will anyway. I, I think on the waterfront, the key point here really is waterfront access. That the community has access to the waterfront. And I think if we could work that in here, I think that's a key point that's missing, either in the preamble or in the lower bullet below.
Yeah, bullet point five talks about that to some extent, is connected both visually and physically to its waterfront. But we'll work on that. We will work on modifying that initial phrase. And then we've talked about affordable housing. In terms of the natural and environmentally sensitive areas, I've heard from two, let's see, one, two, I've heard from two commissioners to keep it at the more general level versus a, a call out of a specific species. So, direction from the commission on that?
Yeah, okay. Why don't we, why don't we just make it just two choices there? Who, who would like to call out a spec, you know, I guess in Tracy's case, salmon or some other specific species in, I guess, the second bullet point? So why don't we have a show of hands, who, who, people who would like to do that? Okay, sounds like we have a consensus for the other choice then, Lori, for the.
Okay, so the more general approach.
Right, habitat and, and species more broadly, yeah.
Okay, great.
Just to clarify for me, for me, the only, the reason that I like to call out salmon is because if we salmon habitat, we are creating good, healthy habitat for so many other species. So I don't need in this vision statement for it to say salmon, if, if that's not where we're going. But I don't want that idea to get lost, that we need to be creating habitat. Because what we are doing right now, but when we say we're protecting our critical areas, we are not creating healthy habitat. And I think we really need to start thinking about the habitat that other species need. That's not always the same as what we might want to do with the land. That's the, that's the part for me that feels important, not so much whether it says salmon. For me, salmon is a shorthand, a way of saying that. But I don't want that overarching idea to get lost.
Appreciate it. Lori, I had a, I, if, if this is roughly in order of priority, right, is that this, these vision bullet points, right?
Right.
I just wondered about financial sustainable being at the, at the very bottom. I just wondered about that.
Yeah, I, I think the reason I put it there is that it, it doesn't have, it has a relationship to land use and, and the things that are addressed in the comprehensive plan. But it's a new concept and one that is not directly, you know, there aren't goals and policies in any of the elements related to financial sustainability. So it didn't feel like it belonged at the top of the list in terms of those topics.
Are you talking about the city being, the city government or the city as a whole? You're talking about the city government, right? Or?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, in terms of, of a, a government that can provide services to its citizens. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It, it kind of got, I was trying to get to the Joe Minicozzi idea that you can build a city that can't support itself because you don't have the land use in place to generate the income to improve the roads and that kind of thing.
Yeah, maybe that phrase deserves a little more elaboration along those lines, in my opinion, just to because it just kind of seemed like, okay, the city wants to be financially sustainable, that, that's obviously very important for the city government and for the community. Okay, I, I think if you could tie those concepts together, I, I think that would be.
Okay.
I agree with Mark on that.
Okay. Any objections to that from anyone?
Are, are we visioned out? Do we have any more? Anybody have any more visions they want us to take or? Go ahead, Dennis.
This is simply not to lose track of Tracy's comment. And I'm just wondering, just to put in as a filler for now, so we don't lose it. It's on that second bullet after the word air and water quality, comma, including habitable ecosystems, et cetera. That'll just as a spacer until we can figure out the right language and not lose what Tracy was after.
Yeah, I've got that.
Good, good idea, Dennis. Go ahead, Mike, yeah.
Yeah, the last financial viability bullet here. We could add that as a caveat to every single one of these bullets. But I'm wondering if maybe that really belongs in the preamble? That one of our ongoing assumptions happens to be before we get into any vision, is that our vision is financially viable.
Well, I, if I could speak to that, I understand your, your, your concern. However, I think what the understanding was when we talked about that just now, so we're talking about financially stable city government versus there's a lot of other ways to read financially stable of a, of a geographic. there's a lot of other ways to read financially stable of a, of a geographical area. You know, that means the balance of businesses and, and family and homes and a whole bunch of other stuff. It could be a, a tax, you know, tax issue versus, you know, a, a larger item for all residents. So I like to keep it kind of, I personally agree with what Mark was saying, that this should be kind of pointed at the city government.
I absolutely agree, Dwight. I think that you can't have a, any of these visions come to pass if the city government isn't financially viable. So what I was suggesting is we put that thought into the preamble.
I might point out that on the second page of your attachment, it kind of gets to this topic because it says, to achieve this vision, responsible commitments in planning and resources will be made.
Good point.
And so I, I would say rather than put it in the preamble, if you want to take it out as a bullet point, we might put it in this ending statement. Rework that to add in the notion of financial sustainability.
I think that could go there, yeah. I think the statement that there, that's there right now isn't sufficient because it, at least to me, it speaks to the planning process, not just any government at all. So if you could expand that, to bring in the idea that we've got a financially viable city government that supports this vision. The vision that the city can actually financially support. Put it there or in the preamble, either one, I think it's fine. I just didn't want to see it as the last bullet.
Yeah. So is, is there anyone who objects to moving it out of the bullet list and putting it into a, a better description in that it's not the, it's, what would it be? Not the preamble, it's the post something. Is that all right?
Yeah, I, I would still like to keep the, the, the connected points about financially sustainable and why that's important, you know.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
I agree.
That concept
Okay.
somewhat, somewhat in there.
Any other comments for tonight?
Anybody else have any thoughts they care to share? This, again, is very preliminary. Of course, there's going to be other opportunities to revisit this. So, yeah, anything, anything more anybody has to share? All right, Lori, Debbie, looks like, looks like.
We've got our marching orders.
Marching orders. All right, so we'll plan on seeing everybody in a couple of weeks. Anything else for tonight? That'll do it? Right. Well, thanks, everybody. Enjoy the rest of your night, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.